Conference meeting of the Mobile County Commission and call the meeting to order. And we'll move right into Sharid. Do we have any speakers this morning?
Yes, sir, we do. We have the new director of the History Museum of Mobile is here to introduce himself to you guys. So, John, if John Sexton.
Good morning, John. How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning, y'all. I'm good. How are y'all?
Great.
Good. So, as she said, I'm the new director of the History Museum of Mobile down here across the way at 111 South Royal Street. Wanted to put a face to the name. I'm very excited and honored to be in this position and to continue working with y'all to do everything that we do at the museum. I just wanted to thank y'all, of course, for your ongoing support and funding of the many things that we do at the museum. I know y'all provide funding for our educational programming, volunteer programming, and of course, y'all were instrumental in the creation and development of Africatown Heritage House. You know, without your support, we wouldn't be able to do all the things we are today, including some of our really good events that we've had recently, such as Colonial Day, one of our educational programings at the fort. We had over 800 kids come to that. It's a packed house. They all really enjoyed that. We had the African-American Music Festival, which also had over 800 people. So, it's just a testament to the involvement in the community that y'all support us so much. And then I thought it would be appropriate to tell y'all from my last quarter, which was January, February, and March, the sort of numbers we're getting at Africatown Heritage House, as well as the museum sites as a whole. We had 15,000 people over that three-month period, including 3,000 people just at Africatown Heritage House, which I'm very proud and honored of. You know, it's a much smaller area than the city market, so the fact that we can engage the community and interest them in that is incredible to me. And that doesn't include the 1,200 people we had just on an adult-guided tour and our school tours. So, again, the fact that we can keep pace with the other sites is just a testament to the power of the story of the Clotilda, as well as Africatown as a community. So, I look forward to working with y'all in the future. And of course, if you're ever at the museum, you know, I'm always around everywhere, but please come by and step by and come and talk to me. I'd love to hear y'all's thoughts and, you know, talk to you one-on-one as well. So, I know Commissioner Luckgood, you've been especially helpful with Africatown, of course. I've heard your name many, many times. So, I look forward to talking to you personally and everyone else on the commission. So, I appreciate y'all's time today and look forward to seeing you.
John, could you tell us a little bit about yourself? Where did you come? Where have you been prior to the History Museum?
Yes, ma'am. So, I'm originally from Arkansas. I've actually worked for two county governments. So, before here, I was in Georgia, working for the city of Kennesaw at the Southern Museum of Civil War and Locomotive History. So, of course, we focused on Civil War and locomotive history. Prior to that, I was in Florida. I was in Sarasota County, Florida. We did historical resources there. So, I was liaison to Historical Marker Commission, historic buildings, so a lot of legal stuff there. And then prior to that, I was in Missouri, where I worked for another county, and I did permanent records, tax records, and preservation of those. So, I'm familiar with the county, and I love working with county officials. So, you know, brings me right back here.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Glad to be here.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you said from January to March, from all museums, you had 15,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
Yes, ma'am. And of course, you know, again, that's why I mentioned those events, because some of those all come at once. But, you know, we're also doing, you know, our Learning Lunch, which is increasing attendance. You know, it was packed yesterday. We packed those out. I, myself, am going to get us started on some new programming to hopefully, you know, increase those numbers as well. So, I'll keep y'all apprised of that. But, we're always looking to do more to keep the community coming back again and again.
Good.
Thanks, y'all.
Welcome to Mobile. And did you get, did you pick that accent up down in Florida?
Sir.
Or is that straight out of Arkansas?
I'm from Arkansas. You know, it's not a, it's not a Bill Clinton accent, but it's close enough.
It almost sounds like you're from Theodore. I don't know. I love, I love people coming around that talk real close to how I talk.
Well, so, you know, I'm from, my family's from the Mississippi Delta region of Arkansas. Not a lot of folk out there, but we're around.
Welcome to Mobile. You and I can communicate real well.
Yes, sir. Yeah, you know, same thing. So, I appreciate y'all. Look forward to seeing y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
No more speakers. I've signed up, sir.
All right. Mr. Carr.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Ask you to consider the following. Number one, approve a list of claims. Two, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of 10,000 from District One Commission funds to help support the band program at Callaway Smith Middle School. Three, approve appropriation contract with the Distinguished Young Women of Mobile County, Alabama, in the total amount of 3,000 for its college scholarship program, funds divided as follows. Four, approve appropriation contract with Spencer Westlong Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of 3,500 from District Two Education Funds to purchase supplies for the summer reading camp at Spencer Westlong Elementary School. Five, approve appropriation contract with the Clotilda Descendants Association in the amount of 10,000 from District One Commission Funds for the landing event honoring the arrival of the 110 survivors of the Clotilda. Six, approve appropriation contract with Soccer for Life in the amount of 7,500 from District One Commission Funds for operational expenses. Seven, approve sponsorship agreement with 100 black men of Greater Mobile in the amount of 1,200 from District One Commission Funds for its 23rd Annual Gala and Scholarship Awards.
Can, can that, can you change that and like to split that, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Eight, approve appropriation contract with the Alabama Kidney Foundation in the total amount of 5,000 for its Kidney Walk and Celebration Event, and funds divided as follows. Nine, adopt resolution approving request of the county garage to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list declared as surplus and authorize those items to be disposed. Ten, approve amendment to the memorandum of understanding, of understanding among the Mobile County Sheriff's Department, U.S. Marshal Service, and the Mobile County Commission, reducing the amount of overtime reimbursement from $4,000 for a total reimbursement in the amount of 18,000.
What's happening? Are there fewer federal inmates in Metro?
That's what it wants to answer.
Okay.
This came to me from Frank Cassidy trying to reduce. So, you're exactly correct.
I don't understand the language. It says reducing the amount of overtime reimbursement.
It should just be a reduction of overtime by $4,000.
Yeah, that probably needs to be changed to of 4,000 for a total of 18.
By 4,000 instead of from.
Correct.
Okay.
We'll make that change. Eleven, approve request of the Environmental Services Department to purchase vehicle from the Revenue Commission for fair market value in the amount of 14,500. Number 12, we'll ask that the Commissioners vote at conference.
So moved.
Second.
And number 12, adopt resolution approving request to dispose of two vehicles from the fixed assets inventory list and to declare those vehicles as surplus property for the purpose of sale of those vehicles to Grand Bay Fire District authorized in the Mobile County Commission, April 22nd, 2024 minutes, Agenda Item Number 34. Thirteen, authorize adoption and submission of the 2024 Year Five Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Development and authorize the Commission President to execute all associated documents.
It should be urban development. I was in, and urban development.
Yes, ma'am. Fourteen, approve Mobile County Commission's Letter of Support of MediaCom's Grant Application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Alabama Broadband Accessibility Fund, for one broadband project in the county.
Is there any indication of what part of the county that?
And the same thing for 15, if you could tell.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. So, for item 14, MediaCom's application, that is for the Chinchula area centered around Highway 63. And for the item 15 Comcast application, that covers a large part of the southern part of the county from the Mississippi border across Grand Bay to Bala Batry.
Thank you.
Thanks. You said Highway 63. Is that a county road number?
I'm not sure. It's, it's a Chinchula Georgetown Road and Roberts Road. It changes names in the middle.
Is that state?
It's a numbered route, but we, we call it.
Chinchula, Georgia. Okay.
We don't, we've never even heard.
Ricky and them are good about calling you and giving you road numbers. Him and Neil will do that to me all the time. County Road 39. I'm like, I don't know what County Road 39 is, but.
Give me the other name.
Yeah.
Slowly but surely, we're getting, getting out to the outline areas.
Yeah. I noticed that, I think we had, we've done several of these that were different companies were applying for a letter of support and grants. And I've noticed some of the work recently in my district with the high-speed internet, particularly for, of course, when we give the letters, it's for underserved communities. And we've seen quite a bit in the south end of the county getting high-speed internet or fiber, I guess, is what they're laying out there.
Fifteen, approve Mobile County's Commission's Letter of Support of Comcast Grant Application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Alabama Broadband Accessibility Fund, for one broadband project in the county. Sixteen, approve amendment number one with the Architects Group for Project Replace Public Works Camera System at Camps 1, 2, 3, and 4. This amendment will increase services to include the addition of design work for Camp 4. The contract amount will increase by 14,500. Seventeen, award bid to Vision Security Technologies for Project Replace Public Works Camera Systems at Camps 1, 2, 3, and 4 for a total bid in the amount of $486,457.68.
Okay, I gotta ask. What's Camp 4?
Citroen Nail.
Oh, okay. I just never heard it called that.
Yeah.
We're just learning all kinds of stuff today.
I was, I was sitting here going, I don't want anybody to know I don't know what Camp 4 is, but I know what the garage is. Okay, got it.
I'm glad you asked.
Eighteen, award bid to Integrity Maintenance for Camp 1 Two-Story Building Renovation for a total bid in the amount of 305,000. Nineteen, approve assignment to the Architects Group for modifications to the sign shop located at Camp 1. The work will consist of the complete design and specifications associated with the development of a new sign shop located at Camp 1 in the amount of $47,332.45. Twenty, approve assignment to PH&amp;J Architects for modifications to the Metro Jail for a medical observation room. The work will consist of design bidding and project administration associated with the development of this project in the amount of $101,200. Twenty-one, authorize memorandum of understanding with the Grand Bay Waterworks Board regarding the implementation of the Grand Bay Sewer Service Project included in the Resources and Ecosystem Sustainability Tourist Opportunities and Revived Economies of the Gulf Coast Act of 2012. Pending final legal review. Twenty-two, authorize acceptance of the grant award and sub-reception agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Grand Bay Sewer Service Project in the amount of $337,344.65 with no match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents pending legal review. Twenty-three, authorize acceptance of a grant award and sub-reception agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Bala Batry North Sewer System Improvements Project in the amount of $206,200 with no match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents pending legal review. Twenty-four, authorize advertising for requests for proposals for the design of the Mobile County Golf Course Website and Point-of-Sale Reservation Management and Accounting Software Advertising.
Commissioners, I've been asked if the Commission would consider voting on this today. I understand Shane Allen is here. They can perhaps provide more detail on the request for the Commission to approve at today's meeting.
I have a question. Hold on. Let me make sure this is. So, I thought we were doing a full website for all of our park facilities.
We are. The, the, each, each reservation system or point-of-sale system has to exist separately and can be connected into this bigger database-driven.
Oh, okay.
Searchable, sales-type website for the entire park system. So, the RV registration system exists on its own, has to be connected. Things for the golf course exist on their own, and how much we're connected is up to, we'll have to work out those details, but things can, can be connected. They're to play nice together and work together, is basically the.
Okay. So, this is consistent with this overall thing we're trying to build?
It's not inconsistent with it. It's not necessarily exact overlay, but it's not inconsistent, and it will work together.
Okay.
You want to add anything on that, Jean?
And the point of service is what it'll handle. T-Pounds.
See?
Your ships. It's gonna handle everything. We're a start on the driving range opens in September. But I have people now, a little term in some of our memberships now. Let's get the golf course built first. So, this will become the brains of the entire operation. Once we move from the driving range to the golf course, all this will move right over the driving range. It's still operating under the same system.
Okay. And John's here from Dogwood. So, the, the backend of this bigger thing we're building is database-driven and searchable. So, if someone clicks, you know, camping or pickleball, it'll come up every park that has pickleball, every park that has camping, every park that has trails. So, it's a big web behind the scenes that'll allow people to basically do business with us and book things. But it, the, each one of the individual types of reservation systems has to exist separately.
Okay. I didn't know. So moved.
Second.
Approve list of credits and solvents and litigations for the Revenue Commission's 2023 tax year. Twenty-six, approve professional services contract with Banks Compton to provide a mural program for the James T. Strickland Youth Center in the amount of 12,000 pending legal review. Twenty-seven, approve professional services contract with Sam Mead Williams to provide a communications audit and resource plan for James T. Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $15,840 pending legal review.
What is this? What is a communications audit and resource plan?
I have a question. And back then, we did an evaluation of our data needs at the court, and we, we have not looked at it since 2008. We have data from the state gathers, the court system gathers, our own in-house county through Pete Rostin. We want to try to put all that together to make a better effective use of data and how we can apply for grants. And this also includes the communication part, is how we can get the positive things that we do through programs and stuff to the community with a better website, things like that.
And the resource part is that after you do the audit, he'll also write grants to try to find money to?
It's she, and she's gonna make recommendations that will take us to the next step. So, once her three months are done, she's done. But she's gonna give us a plan and contacts to go out and go from there.
Okay. Thanks.
Twenty-eight, approve agreements for grant funds for the Community Traffic Safety Program through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for overtime of traffic safety enforcement for the Click It or Ticket Memorial Day Enforcement Program in the total amount not to exceed $45,983, and drive sober or get pulled over in the amount of not to exceed $51,977.40 for law enforcement agencies as follows.
Well, how, I guess the, the program for the Click It or Ticket and the Community Traffic Safety Program, I guess these cities are included in that region. Is that why we're voting to approve for these police departments?
That is my understanding, but we can get more information and.
Back when, first they said they were gonna close it down, then they said, no, we're gonna leave it open, and we're gonna add all these other counties. So, this was something that state insisted that we take on.
Yes.
So, we have to approve the funding for, I guess, the Southwest Alabama Regional Highway Safety Office to grant this money to other police departments if, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Are we the only authoritative body, or do they have to be approved by these other counties?
Or maybe cities. Some of these are cities. I guess they would have to accept the grants. I don't, I'm not sure. Maybe Monday, we could get.
Yeah. It seems a little odd to me, but.
It's, 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 it's the first time this type has come before.
Good morning. It is my understanding, and I've seen some of them, that these municipalities, these departments have entered into these grant agreements already, and they're coming up now individually for approval, but they've already agreed to accept the funding for the different highway safety programs. So, there are agreements in place with municipalities.
Okay. And, no, you go ahead. I was just gonna say, so why Mobile County? Why, why do we have to stamp it with approval?
Because the actual regional safety office, traffic safety office, is in Mobile County. And we cover, I think it's nine counties that surround us, Baldwin, Washington, et cetera. So, that's just where the office has been housed.
Okay. So, it's just a location issue then, because it's located here?
Yes, ma'am. That's my understanding.
Still seems odd.
So, one question I have, and this is an answer for another day. We had, not too long ago, a problem with one of these. And the state came to us, asking us what we were gonna do about a particular situation. Will we, do we have that same responsibility for these places that are not Mobile County? If something goes wrong with one of these, will they be coming to Mobile County Commission saying, we found this irregularity with how this grant was administered? How are you gonna fix it?
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll speak with Andrew Sullivan, who's the, in charge of the program, and find out what our duties and obligations would be in case there's a problem in another county. I can't answer that right.
I didn't, yeah, I wasn't expecting an answer today.
I think it would probably be a good idea for Andrew to be here Monday, in my opinion, to maybe give an explanation. And I, I mean, when I look at Grove Hill Police Department, Thomasville, and Clark County, but when I see Hail County, which is nowhere near Mobile County, it wouldn't even be in what I would consider a nine-county region. It's way up, I think, close to Talladega.
It's Maunville, Greensboro.
Yeah. So, it's not, yeah, I mean, I get Thomasville and Grove Hill. That's in Clark County, but I don't understand. I guess what caught my attention is when it said Hail County, because I know Hail County seems like it would be in a different region for them. But I think Andrew would probably, it'd probably help if he could be here Monday.
I'll communicate that to him. I'm sure he'll, he'll be happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-nine, award bid to Garnier Construction for extension of Effluent Force Main from Bala Batry Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase 2 for their total low bid in the amount of $15,999,800, and authorize execution of contract documents. Thirty, approve contract amendment number two with Thompson Engineering for Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan to add Task 3 Building Assessment of the Dave Patton House. Thirty-one, approve authorization by the Director of Finance to obligate $1,325,667.69 of 2024 capital improvement warrants for Chickasaw Bog Park Campground improvements per the provisions of Section 3 of the Preliminary Resolution adopted in the Mobile County Commission November 13th, 2023 minutes, Agenda Item Number 9. Thirty-two, award bid to Jay Hunt Enterprises for Chickasaw Bog Park Campground Improvements for their total bid in the amount of $3,528,346.50, and authorize execution of contract documents requested by the Environmental Services Department and to be paid from funding sources as follows. Thirty-three, approve appropriation contract with the Mobsters of Baseball in South Alabama Foundation in the amount of 5,000 from District 3 Education Funds for operational expenses.
I'd like to, I'd like to split that from education funds.
Would you, if you're willing to split it, will you just add 2,500 and make it a total of 75?
Yeah.
Can we do that? Eddie, instead of splitting, just add? Thank you.
Total amount of 7,500.
Thank you.
And that was District 1 Education?
Yes.
Thirty-four, approve contract with Dogwood Productions to build and host a functional and searchable website for the Mobile County Park System to inform the public about Mobile County Commission's parks, sports parks, trails, and districts, camping, water access, and other amenities, and park activities in the amount of up to 50,000, including the first year's hosting fees. Support maintenance and ADA accessibility widget, and upon approval of the Mobile County Commission, an amount of up to 5,000 per year for hosting, support maintenance, and ADA accessibility widget fees.
Question. How is this going to work with the soccer complex? AFC manages and operates their reservation system and all of that.
Similar to, to the golf course. It would, it would exist in a similar universe. So, we'll have the, and John, you can come up if you want to answer some more questions. John Strop is here. So, this is the big interface for all the parks, all the amenities. The individual reservation systems have to exist on their own, and we'll be able to link to them.
So, they'll still manage it the same way? It'll just be part of the, to be able to access it?
Right.
Right. You can kind of think of it as, I don't know, kind of a big, the portal. So, you know, as you get into the golf section, it would be able to connect to the POS sites. Same thing with, you know, RV rentals, those types of things. So, this would kind of be the overarching site that directed people to the right place and would be able to tie them.
Yeah. So, the same situation.
Exactly. So, if they have, if they have a, a link to reserve, we would connect the link to that. If it's a contact person or their contact system, we'll connect to that. So, this is the, this is the big thing. We're gonna push to direct all of this activity to all the parks and have it be a system, and it be interconnected and linked. and have it be a system, and it be interconnected and linked. It would be, it'll be so cool to have, click one button for kayaking and have all the options for kayaking.
It'll be a lot more visual and, you know, front-facing.
As opposed to go into each individual park now?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
So, it's gonna be very much easier for us to push it, promote it, you know, all of that. It'll, it'll make it much more seamless and appear to be a universe, right?
How long will that take, John, to bring all that to fruition?
Probably about a six-month process.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. And we already started on, the logos are already in place, and the color scheme is kinda, is already set, and, um, it'll, it's gonna all work together, but six months, I think, is a, is a good number for this.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Excited, thanks.
Mr. Cherie, when you get excited about it, let us know.
Thank you, there's just so much happening, and it's, uh, to be, to have to direct people to thirty places, it's gonna be so much better when we have, like, one thing to push and direct everything to that one location. We're gonna improve search, we're gonna improve domain authority, it's gonna be amazing.
Very good.
Thirty-five. Approve Assignment of the Alight Solutions Contract for Payroll and Professional Services dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two to H.I.G. Capital, and authorize the interim county administer, administrator to execute then the consent on behalf of the Mobile County Commission. Thirty-six. Approve Sponsorship Agreement with Africatown Community Development Corporation in the amount of two thousand five hundred from District One Commission Funds for the Africatown Bridge Challenge. Thirty-seven. Approve Donor Advised Endowed Fund with Community Foundation of South Alabama in the amount of twenty-five thousand from District One Education Funds. The Donor Advised Endowed Fund with the Community Foundation of South Alabama will support the acquisition and maintenance of sites of historical significance related to African-American contributions to Mobile County, and deposit twenty-five thousand from District One Education Funds into the said fund and authorize the President of the Commission to sign all relevant documents. Number thirty-eight. I ask, humbly ask, that you vote at the conference.
And make it effective for today, please.
Effective for today. Appointment of E. Edwin Kerr as County Administrator.
Before y'all, before y'all vote to approve this, did anybody, has anybody interviewed this guy? To see if he's even qualified for the job?
I think he's.
Did we have any other applicants? Or is there anybody else who would like to apply today? Okay, go ahead.
I think he's been well-tested at this point.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Congratulations, Eddie.
Thank you. And just as important, important, I ask that you vote at conference for item number thirty-nine. Appointment of Kim Newberry Sanderson as interim county engineer effective May ninth.
So moved, second.
And congratulations to you, Kim.
Forty. Approve Request to Mobile County Personnel Board to open the position of county engineer for internal promotion within the county.
So, we appointed you the interim, and now you have to fight to keep that position?
I'm gonna go ahead and smooth this now, so moved.
Second.
Good. Thank you.
Forty-one. Consider Taking the Following Action on Bids. Forty-two.
There was one, I had a question about, at the end, the last item, canceling the purchase of twenty-four, um, Ford F-one responder pickups. Who are we buying twenty-four trucks for?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, back in October, the Sheriff's Office came in and requested a purchase of forty-four pickup trucks, and that was including the parks and for the Sheriff's Office fleet. Okay, since that time, we haven't had a delivery. It's been put off, Ford is, is holding the trucks, it's in damage, or recall, and, uh, we had a point now for safety of our constituents. The Sheriff's Office needs vehicles. So, we do have some that are on the ground in another area that we did have a bid for, which was the first bid, twenty-three, twenty-four, where they can purchase. So, we're gonna have to cancel half of that order in order to make this purchase.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, I guess the first item, I guess the last item in the bids cancels that order, and the first item in the bids approves to make the purchase for the new ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Forty-two. Approve Renewal of Subscription Agreement with Go-To Technologies USA in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for rescue services for the Mobile County Commission. Forty-three. Approve Three-Year Renewal Agreement with N.H.A. Anti-Virus Firewalls and Security Solutions in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars for antivirus software for the Sheriff's Office to be paid from Cost Center twenty. Forty-four. Approve Renewal of Subscription Agreement with Blue Alley in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-six cents for VMware Maintenance Subscription for the Sheriff's Office. Forty-five. Approve Renewal of Software Agreement with Mike Hoffman's Equipment Service in the amount of two thousand one hundred and forty dollars for tank monitoring inspections and IDS software updates for Camp One, Two, Three, and the Public Works Administration. Forty-six. Approve Renewal of Subscription Agreement with Leeds Online in the amount of three thousand eighty-five dollars for Cellhawk Investigator for the Sheriff's Office. Forty-seven. Approve Renewal of Subscription Agreement with Questica under the current purchasing cooperative Omni, Omni E.D.U. contract in the amount of sixty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars for software as service, software as a service, open book, and budget book annual. Forty-eight. Approve Thirty-Six-Month Lease Agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation, C.P.C. Office Technologies from the current State of Alabama Contract for two Sharp copiers at the cost of seventy-two thousand sixty, seventy-two dollars and sixty-four cents each per month for the Road and Bridge Department. And Commissioners, we have one add-on. Approve Open Competitive Application Process for the Position of Deputy County Administrator to be conducted by the Mobile County Personnel Board.
Do we need to vote on that today, or are we gonna wait till Monday?
So moved.
What's that? I'm sorry, I was looking back at the forty-eight, I was.
It's not, uh, the add-on to, um, for the Personnel Board to put out application.
Second. On, on forty-eight, uh, why are we leasing copiers as opposed to purchasing them? Would it not be more cost-effective in the long run to purchase as opposed to lease? I mean, there must, there, I'm sure there's probably a good reason, I just don't know it.
Come on back up.
Come on, Susan.
That's what you get for being here a hundred years and having all the answers.
Well, yes, it's more cost-effective to lease it because of the servicing that's involved.
Because I'm sorry.
The services in, that's involved. See, you need copiers. If something goes wrong with, we can call them out, and they'll come and take care of it with no problem. Uh, when you buy copiers, you got a lot of other things involved, you know, services, supplies, so on and so forth. But these agreements include some supplies as well. So, it's better just to lease it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's all for administration.
Before we move on to the engineering, I think Mr. Sullivan's here. If we wanna go back up to number twenty-eight, and maybe he can answer some of the questions we had about the, um, Southwest Alabama Regional Highway Sa- Safety Office. So, I guess some of the, hey, Andrew, thanks for rushing over. Um, I guess, uh, my questions, and some of all of our questions, and I'm not gonna ask their questions, but I was just curious. Uh, Hale County, is that in your, is that in the southwest?
Yes.
Regional, so it goes up that far, far north? And, um, I think one of the other questions that was asked, you wanna ask, you can ask. I'm not trying to.
Yeah. Uh, um, I guess it was last year, year, in the last twelve to eighteen months, we had a problem with one of the grants, and the state came down to the Commission saying, "We have these irregularities in this grant. Mobile County Commission, what are you gonna do to fix it?" And the question I have is, will we have, do we have that same kind of, um, authority, liability, or whatever it is, for these counties that are so remote to us?
Now, when you say the grant, is it something specific with the office that I'm with? Or is it another grant in particular?
Wasn't that, wasn't it?
I think it was with your, I, I recall, I guess the, the best way to ask the question, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll just ask the way I would ask it.
Okay.
If there's some misappropriation of the monies by one of these other agencies, does that fall? Are we gonna have auditors coming down here from a DECA or other places looking at us to?
Not Mobile County. We would go to that agency. If that agency is using mis, or mis, using misappropriation appropriation of funds, then they will be required to reimburse Mobile County back for whatever Mobile County reimbursed them, and then Mobile County would reimburse a DECA.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what, yeah. Appreciate it.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
One, I do have one other question. How much farther north of Hale, than Hale County does your region go? How, how far up did they bust this thing up? I thought it was, uh.
So, there's four regions, there's the North Central, the Southwest, the East Central, and the Southwest. And so, right now Hale County is the very top of my region, but it looks like that possibly before the next physical year, they're going to redo the regions. So, I could end up with going for the further north, or further east, or further northeast, uh, maybe Birmingham, Tuscaloosa area. Uh, so, they're, they're gonna split up the regions to make them more equal for how many departments we serve, 'cause when you kinda once you get out of Mobile and Baldwin County, it gets pretty rural. So, yes, ma'am.
My understanding is these jurisdictions have already received this grant funding?
So, there's four grants, there's the Selective Traffic Enforcement, there's Click It or Ticket, Drive Sober, Get Pulled Over, and the impaired hotspot. All those grants have already, the, the funding has already come in, and it's already been approved. It was approved by the Commission, um, on September twenty-fifth, I believe, of two thousand twenty-three. These agencies that, uh, I put, uh, for this time, they are new agencies that have not participated either ever or in a long time, and they're participating only in Click It or Ticket. And so, the Click It or Ticket funds, I think, are like forty-one thousand dollars for that two-week period. And so, I don't know how much money I will allocate each department, or that each department will use. Some will use more, some will use less, so that's why I wasn't able to put a specific amount on there, just the whole amount for Click It or Ticket.
Right, so that grant money comes into the county and then is appropriated to all these
Yes, ma'am.
different programs and.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and there's some that was held, uh, I guess, put aside for these new ones?
Well, it, it's that, those four are just going to be a part of Click It or Ticket. There's several other agencies that are gonna work it. The forty-one thousand is not just for those four agencies. That's gonna be Mobile County Sheriff's Department, Mobile Police Department, Baldwin County Sheriff's Office. All those agencies will get a little bit of that forty-one thousand.
And the, the, one other question, I guess, is their prospective county or municipality, uh, I guess, have to vote to, to accept some kind of agreement with us to, to get that funding?
Yes, sir, uh, actually, on the contract, uh, there should be, the contracts that I sent, there should be a, a signature from their mayor, uh, from their city financial officer, and from their, uh, police chief. If it's a county, there should be a signature from the county commission president, the county financial officer, and the sheriff.
I understand a little better now.
Thank you.
Any, does anybody have any other questions or anything?
We'll wait till you get to the door.
Yes, sir, sounds good.
Make your, make your run back up here.
Thank you, Andrew, for running over. All right, uh, interim county engineer.
Okay, number one, approve assigning a contract for professional engineering services for construction engineering and inspection for safety improvements on Bell and Graff Road from State Route one eighty-eight to Half Mile Road, Lawrendon Road, to Kimley Horn and Associates. Number two, award bid to HCL Contracting for Project House Ferry Road at Fire, Fire Tower Road for their low bid in the amount of two million two hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents, and this was a twenty-eighteen pay-go, and this is construction of a roundabout.
When, when will that, uh, come to fruition?
Once the, um, assignment award is approved, we'll start executing contracts, and it usually takes several weeks to get that done. And then, um, we'll have a pre-construction meeting, and they'll be issued a notice to proceed, and they have about two weeks after that to get started. So, usually, maybe one to two months.
Okay.
Unless there's some, a delay that I'm not aware of, but that's typical.
So, they'll begin work in between one and two months?
With early midsummer, yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, how much of a, and, and, these improvements, I'm sure, like all improvements, require some sort of inconvenience. So, what will happen out on Fire Tower Road as this is going on? They'll always have a lane open?
They hopefully should always have a lane open, but let me get with, um, James Warpaul and the plans, and I'll be happy to look into that and give you a better answer.
I don't wanna guess. Give people plenty of forewarning if there's.
Oh, definitely.
Hopefully, not any detours, but if there are, then.
We do that through Cherie's office and get the word out.
Right.
Wel, welcome to, uh, District Three Roundabout World. Your, your, your phone is about to be on fire.
It's so much better when they get through, but that, during that process, it's not pretty.
A lot of times, though, with roundabouts, you shift them off the main part of the intersection, and you're able to construct a large portion of it, keeping, keeping the roads somewhat, you know, keeping them open. But eventually, yeah, there is usually a shift, there, there's gonna have to be a short closure at least, but at least most of the work can be usually done without being right in the middle of the intersection.
About how long do you, does it normally take to finish a project like this?
Oh, my goodness, um.
Ballpark.
I would estimate a year, but let me, probably a, a year, plus or minus, but let me look at the actual construction time period and let you know.
Give me, give me a call later, I'll let you know about roundabouts.
Tell me your stories.
I'll tell you the stories. Danny, how many calls a day do we get about roundabouts? They're great, let me say that roundabouts are great, and I'm excited about the one in your district, 'cause, um, it's in a great location, it's needed, it's a safety, uh, that, that point right there at House Ferry and Fire Tower Road is a dangerous intersection, has been for years. Um, you know, when I first, uh, got elected, I hated roundabouts, I really did, and I was, but the more research that I've done on roundabouts, and of course, with my law enforcement background, and how much safer they are than a traditional, uh, red light, because you still have the, uh, where people will run red lights, or stop signs, or other traffic functions there. But I've really become a big fan of roundabouts, and, um, there's one under construction, or just finished one in my district, and there's one at Jeff Hamilton and Johnson Road that's under construction right now, and they've been pretty good about keeping most of the roads open all the time. So, but they're, I, I just think they're, um, I think they're a lot safer as, from a public safety aspect. So, um, to me, they're just a lot safer, uh, way to.
As long as everybody follows the traffic rules.
That's right. Don't try to back a boat through it, through it or anything.
Thank you, Kim.
Okay, and number three, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Booth Town Road and Mason Ferry Road, Great Drain Basin Pay. That is part of our twenty-twenty pay-as-you-go. Number four, approve preliminary and final plat of Sandy Creek Unit One off Newman Road. Preliminary and final plat of Harold Julia Subdivision off Jeff Hamilton Road and Snow Road South. Preliminary and final plat of Hembry's Bacon Row Resubdivision in addition to Lot Three off Tanner Williams Road. Preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of Sim Subdivision of Grand Bay Wilmer Road South and Cunningham Road. Preliminary and final plat of Coxwell Crossing Unit Two off McLeod Road and Baird Coxwell Road. And preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of Lot One, sixty-two, thirty-eight Creel Road Subdivision off of Creel Road.
Kim, is that Sandy Creek, the one that we met about, the?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And number five, approve resurfacing the parking lots, parking lots for Georgetown Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Number six, approve amending the Mobile County Commission meeting minutes as follows. February twenty-sixth, twenty-four, Agenda Item Fifty-five to change project number from GFP one thirteen, twenty-four to CDP, project number, resurfacing the parking lot for the Wilmer Volunteer Fire Department. Number seven, approve summary change order with Dorch Figures and Sons Incorporated for Jeremiah Denton Airport Replacement of Bulkhead Phase Two for additional erosion control measures in the amount of twenty-three thousand, three seventy-four, fifty and adjustment of the final plan quantities to match the final installed quantities, decreasing the contract by sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, forty-six cents. And this adjustment for final plan quantities is an FAA requirement. Total contract cost will be one million, four hundred, eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Number eight, approve supplemental agreement number three with Frank Turner Construction, Inc. for Project Tanner Williams Road Additional Lanes for additional supplies and work necessary due to the conflict with an existing water line and storm sewer pipe installation in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents, of which ninety-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and seventy cents is reimbursable for Mobile Count, Mobile Area Water and Sewer System per our project utility agreement. Number nine, approve right-of-way and/or agree easement agreements on Ziegler Boulevard in the total amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars to be divided as follows. For Project Ziegler Boulevard Additional Lanes. Number ten, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
I've had a question for a couple of weeks about the acceptance of deeds and right-of-ways for easements on Ziegler Boulevard. Is that, is this different than the project that's already underway? Are we still, are we still doing the deeds and stuff on that, the construction? It's already, is this a different project?
This is a Ziegler Boulevard project that will run from Schillinger Road to Tanner Williams by Faith Academy. And it is in design right now. It's, it's moved into right-of-way acquisition. So it's not in construction.
So what, so the other one goes from, I guess, down Tanner Williams. So the part, so I guess there's, I, I guess they widened on the other side of Schillinger's, then skipped over and now they're doing from Snow Road, back east somewhere.
Yes, sir, Tanner Williams Road.
So that's, so Ziegler, sorry, I mean, I know, Ziegler, it changes names, but this is to do the section from the red light by the Coast Guard Base there where Tanner Williams and Ziegler meet back to Schillinger's.
Back to Schillinger, yes, sir.
I was confused because I thought that was one huge project, but this is a separate project in between. Okay.
They're too big. We have to do these in.
Okay, I was, I was curious. I just saw the Ziegler Road and I, I guess Tanner, I think of Tanner Williams, Ziegler is the same.
A lot of work going on out there.
There is.
On number five, Georgetown is Volunteer Fire Department. Chief Mack asked that we please let him know prior to anything that begins, they say, pull their trucks out, you know? I'm sure you will, but I just.
I made contact with him already and I'll let him know. They, they won't be able to start until the week following next anyway, so. I've, I've let him know. He said he needed two days advance, so.
Okay.
Make sure we do that.
Thank you.
I guess that was it. Was that all, Kim? I'm sorry. Do you have anything further? I just want to make an announcement about the Animal Shelters. Annual Argue My Mother Adoption Event that'll be going on this weekend, on Mother's Day weekend. It'll be Saturday from ten to two at the Animal Shelter. Is that right, Morgan?
That's right.
Thank you. Other than that, I haven't, I don't have anything else. I guess we'll stand adjourned until May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four for the regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. And oh, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's roundabouts. They, they can say what they want. They can raid them. Now, the one so far at Jeff Hamilton, they've only had to close one little leg of the road, but it's closed. You can't go through it.